Again, I will welcome you to the Coeur d'Alene School District Workshop for April 16th, 2018. Board members, we're going to be using our mics for the rest of the go here because we are recording. And, let's see here. Okay, just real quick, since we're all friends here, I'm going to go ahead and just skip introductions just to save us all time. You know who we are. And we will go ahead and get into public comment first. Public comment will be taking on our two agenda items for tonight, which are the math ad hoc recommendations for secondary math and a discussion around the Hayden Lake building site. If, I have the list up here, so if anyone wants to speak that hasn't signed up, just let me know and we'll get you added to the list. But we're going to start with Amy Voeller. Kind of standard rules apply, three minutes if you can, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Trustees and Superintendent Olson. My name is Amy Voeller and I'm here as a community resident and parent with kids in the Coeur d'Alene Public Schools. Having served on the advocacy campaign for the last bond and levy, I have grave concerns about the decision that has been made to build a new school on the current NEXA site. The promise, which I helped communicate to our community during the bond and levy campaign, was to build a school in the northwest sector of our district where we have the most crowded schools. It was conveyed to our community that building a school in the northwest sector was to help move hundreds of students currently in Portables out of Portables without having to bus them across Highway 95 and thereby expose them to traffic safety concerns. I attended multiple campaign meetings in which maps were shown to note the target location of a new school west of Highway 95 and north of Prairie, all in an effort to gain more support for passing the bond. We now face a situation in which a decision has been made to use those funds to build a school east of Highway 95, less than one mile away from another elementary school. The less-than-ideal location of this site has been rationalized under the guise that the school will open earlier, fall of 2019, and cost far less than building on a property in the promised location, which the district is also in the process of acquiring, corner of Ramsey and Prairie. However, having been involved in meetings discussing the task of building on the NEXA site, it appears questionable to me that this new school on the NEXA site will open by fall of 2019, and questionable as to whether it truly will cost less than building in a more ideal location, even with some sort of partnership with the city of Hayden. I'm here to ask the board to reconsider the promises made to your constituents. I have personally spoken with parents whose kids are in the Portables. They are upset and disappointed that the bond they supported is now being used to create a scenario that is very different than what they had been told. They find it difficult to understand why, and even more importantly, how 500 students will be bused across town to attend school. They wonder why there isn't reconsideration to build on the Ramsey Prairie site, especially in light of the fact that the Hayden School may not open by fall of 2019 and potentially cost more to build. If we hope to pass future bonds, we need to follow through with what we're communicating and promising our constituents. Building a school in the NEXA site is a double jeopardy. It jeopardizes the students by failing to provide a school where they most need it, and it jeopardizes future bond campaigns. Thank you.
Okay, Steve Casey.
Ooh, that's better. So anyway, I would apologize with that. What I do know is when I look down at the committee, and I believe the committee, and I may be wrong in numbers, overwhelmingly support the recommendation from this committee. It was a nine-to-two or seven-to-two vote. And I look on here and it says Certified Public Accountant/Educator, Claremont Graduate, Wife/Mother, Statistician/Division Chair/Mathematics/Computer Science, North Idaho College, Associate Professor of Math, Teacher, Coeur d'Alene High School, Teacher, Lake City High School, Instructional Coach, Coeur d'Alene Public Schools, Inventor/Product Developer, Director of Secondary Education, Principal, Lake City High. Now, that's pretty high-powered people. And I learned many, many years ago, when I was fortunate enough to be the principal, that sometimes you had to make decisions upon the input of your colleagues. You couldn't know it all. In closing, I would say, I've known Mike Nelson for many, many years as a student. I hired him as a teacher. I hired him as my assistant principal, and I have all the faith in the world of his recommendations. So mine would be a do-pass recommendation. Thank you. That was Les, and I have four and a half on the other one. Chair Morrisrow, Members of the Board, Superintendent Olson. Tonight, I am hopeful to hear that our capital projects and land acquisition and negotiations with the city of Hayden are moving forward to a positive resolution with the city of Hayden. Time is of the essence in moving forward. You have stated many times that your plans to build an elementary school on the NEXA site will be finished with doors opening in the fall of 2019. You have also stated that you hope to have other land purchased in the northwest section of the district soon to accommodate a new elementary school. If neither site is available in a timely manner and construction cannot be completed by the fall 2019 deadline, which has long been the board's target date, then I suggest we look at opening the doors the beginning of second semester, in February, at the site that addresses the growth in the northwest section of the district. The NEXA school can remain open, continuing to serve 225 students. The new elementary school will open its doors to 500-plus, immediately eliminating the 15 Portables currently on the sites of Skyway, Atlas, and Ramsey. We are also in critical need of a new middle school in the northwest section of our district. Woodland Meadows capacity is listed at 808. It currently serves 865 students. According to studies done by local economist Olivia Metz, the fastest-growing population in Coeur d'Alene is the 10- to 14-age group. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a problem in our middle schools as well. I appreciate the time that you've given me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Katie Clayder.
Hello. I wasn't even going to speak tonight until Mike and I were at church, the same church yesterday, and the sermon was on "Think About Your God-Given Passion." And as you all know, unfortunately, mine is education. And it's not something that I actually want to have, but I'm extremely passionate about it, not just for my own kids, but for every single kid. And so, I'm here again tonight on the math issue to ask you if any of the five of you have had any CHS math students in the last five years. Dave?
No.
Tamara? Lisa? Tom? Casey? Mike? Mike? Trina? Okay, I've had three, okay? So quickly, I'll just go through their scenarios. Our oldest daughter, Sarah, was appointed to the Naval Academy. Seventeen thousand applied, 1,000 got in. She was the principal nominee for the entire state of Idaho, which would have given her a guaranteed spot to the academy, but her math score made her go to prep first. And contrary to what you may have heard, she did not leave because of her grades. She was sexually assaulted and medically discharged from there. When she got there, all of her tutors, who tutored her closely, they are given one-on-one tutors, at the prep school, could not believe how behind in math she was, and they almost made her feel like, "How can you not know this?" She's like, "I swear, I never learned it." And so, she had intents remediation in math there. Emily is a stellar student on paper. The University of South Carolina recalculated her GPA to 4.36. So we would have expected that she got Samarit Bay Scholarship according to their scale, but her SAT score was a 1250 after taking it for the third time. So when I called them, I'm like, "How can this be? She has a 4.36 GPA." And they said, "She's clearly grade-inflated. Her SAT score doesn't correlate with her GPA at all. She's not competitive for a scholarship. But she looks great on paper and she'll have a red stole at CHS on graduation day." Then I have Thomas, who's a sophomore this year, who Mike Nelson told me in the park three years ago that the class of 2020 would be the first ones to complete the integrated math program, 9 through 12, that Thomas's class of 2020 would receive. Do you remember, Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Thomas now is in, he's been in ALP from third grade all the way halfway through eighth grade. And in eighth grade at Canfield, he felt like the wheels were falling off after the first semester. So he begged me to put him back in math, in regular math, which if you have an ALP kid for five years, they rarely beg to go back to a regular class, right? So he finished first semester of Algebra I, then he got to high school because he had a B. He wanted to go back. He knows that he needs to have an A. He goes back to CHS to retake Algebra I and gets a C because he didn't even get it the first time. So now he has a C, so now he's moved on to geometry and he has an A. Not only does he have an A, he has almost 100% A. And I kept thinking, "That can't be right." And at the teacher conference, his algebra teacher was sitting next to his geometry teacher, and the algebra teacher looked a little stunned that he had an A in geometry, which is first rate, kind of made me think, "Hm." So I contacted my friend, who does a lot of national standardized tests, only to find out that Thomas, as you received my email, scored, he took a placement test for Algebra II, which he has seven weeks of geometry left, so he's getting ready to enter Algebra II, and he got 10 out of 30 questions right and zero geometry questions correct. And he too is in line for intents remediation. Okay, so this is my experience. So you guys are making decisions based on my children. None of your children, my children, and another 1,200 children, however many that go there. Okay, so I'm just trying to get you to put names to the faces. Mike, what math class did you teach at CHS? What did you teach?
Spanish.
And are you creating the math curriculum? I thought that you and Ryan Gisby were creating the math curriculum.
Katie?
Okay.
I'm sorry, your time's about up.
Okay, well, that's all I have to say. Please realize that you're making decisions for real kids, even though your kids aren't there. It really matters for the future of these kids. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jen Decker.
So I typed mine out because both of these topics are very passionate topics of mine. So good evening, Dr. Olson, administrators, trustees. Thank you for allowing the public to take part in the workshop this evening. I kind of find it anticlimactic that the two issues that I'm most passionate about are up for decision tonight, after two to three years of discussion on both, and I get exactly three minutes to speak. So I'll start by quoting "The Five Dysfunctions of a Team" that was taken from said book, "Five Dysfunctions of a Team." The first one, "Absence of trust, fear of conflict, lack of commitment, avoidance of accountability, and inattention to results. Those five characteristics make up a failing organization. I think you'll find the relevance shortly here and a common theme for both issues that are on the remainder of the agenda tonight." I'll start with the building issues. I was fortunate enough to become a part of LRP in 2016. The LRP committee before me was brilliant enough to hire the Construction Services Group in an attempt to demonstrate to the board that we were approaching a crisis in overcrowding, and not only that, but deteriorating buildings as well. In 2015, LRP recommended to the board that a bond needed to be passed in order to keep up with the growing population of the school-aged cohort. Two years went by and the bond passed on March 14th, 2017. Since then, all major construction project bids have been overbudgeted, to the point where one will be postponed and rebid at a later date. This has all happened because of the lack of leadership and oversight. The excuse given to the public in the paper, "High construction costs." What hasn't gone up? Milk, gas, everything has gone up. It's called budgeting and it's called planning. I do not blame the individual who budgeted for these projects. This is normally done by a team of professionals in order to use the taxpayers' money wisely and to get the biggest bang for the buck. Stop with the excuses, plan ahead, and let's put the right people in the right job in order to reach success. Ground has not been broken for the new elementary school that was promised to the district website and the district's social media, all over it for the northwest corridor. Hasn't happened yet. As a LRP member, I see the lack of transparency to the public and I'm very upset. There is no way the new elementary school will open for 2019 unless a sheer miracle happens. If by chance that miracle happens, that's still four years after the recommended date, two years after the bond, and that's unacceptable. When, again, will the leadership start taking responsibility? Lewiston, they passed their bond on the same day we did. Those kids will be moving into their new high school fall of this new school year. So again, I think you see my point. When the leadership starts taking responsibility and starts planning, that's when action will happen. We owe it to the trustees who volunteer their time and energy into our community, and trustees, you owe it to our taxpayers to do the right thing. Learn from neighboring communities. Trust is earned and trust needs to happen if there's any future for our bonds. Okay, as for math, I want to preface what I'm about to say by stating, this is not about integrated math versus traditional math. This is about, once again, the lack of transparency, accountability, and leadership. To go back in time, I learned that the district adopted Big Ideas in 2015. As we know, Big Ideas as a subpar curriculum does not meet the core standards. I met with Mike two years ago after reading the following quote in the paper. "Not concerned, about 32% of the district's juniors are deemed college and career-ready in math. I was told in the spring of 2016 that the fall for the incoming freshmen, they would begin integrated math. That didn't happen. I was then told Venture High School would pilot integrated math. That did not happen. Fast forward, and here we are on decision night, and many trustees feel like they need to vote out of desperation. And as our scores continue to plummet, putting our students well below the national and the state average, and operating well below our performance index. Whatever happens tonight voting-wise, know that nothing will change our failing math program until the system is fixed. This isn't about which math route to take. This is about ending years of grade inflation, improperly executed mastery-based learning where high school students have been taught and conditioned to believe that you can get as many retakes as they see necessary. This is about increasing the rigor. This is about the admin building being in tune to what is really happening. I was told by a building administrator that the math program works for some. It should work for all, not just the lucky few to happen to have the extra money and time to hire tutors or to let their students take math online. You can throw the best traditional integrated math program at this district and it will also fail. As you vote tonight on either the deconstructed/reconstructed Big Ideas traditional pathway, the Big Ideas integrated, remember that the excuses need to stop and improvements in the system need to happen. Trustees demand more, demand better. Leave this area and you'll see how very far behind we are and how out of tune we are in terms of college and career preparedness." My last paragraph, promise. In conclusion, you can see that you trustees have been led to believe that through a series of excuses, that this is normal. This isn't normal. Remember those five dysfunctions of a team? Let's hope that today marks a fresh start. I hope that an acknowledgement can be made to our community that mistakes have been made, that we can learn from these lessons, and that the district can do better, and I hope that they will do better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Decker. Okay. Dr. Nelson, that's it. There wasn't anyone else who wanted to comment, was there? Okay, so Dr. Nelson, I'll turn it over to you, sir, to present item C.
Okay. Push the right button. Good evening, Chair Morrisrow, Superintendent Olson, and members of the board. I would like to take a liberty for a quick second. I shouldn't have to be standing in front of you. I truly admit, we shouldn't be talking about this. Our district and our community demands more. We shouldn't be in a situation whereby our students aren't able to achieve their goals. But we've also been talking about ways to be able to do it for the last several years. And I'm hoping that tonight, we can bring that to the crux and hopefully make a decision that is going to benefit my kids and the kids who are in their programs right now, and to make sure that we aren't letting anything go through the pax. So, I have a couple of objectives, and really, for the most part, the objectives are to clear up some things that have happened since the last time that we have talked. Wanted to focus a little bit about the Common Assessments piece, what we're really focusing on. There have been some developments in the text. Wanted to also remind you the difference of our professional development plan and why that's being put in place, and to talk a little bit about parent and stakeholder commitments as well that we need to make as a district. In addition, I wanted to talk to you about the university recognition piece. We are here because we need changes in our district. We need two prongs of changes, according to our ad hoc committee. I'm not a voter in this. I facilitate the conversation. But again, I recognize the same thing that you did. We put together a group of people to be able to help give us the direction. In doing so, we have three different areas that we need to improve. Focus, coherence, and rigor. That's why you put the committee together. That's what we have put together today to be able to present back to you. This conversation has been going on for over three years. We started talking about the challenges that we saw back in 2015 with the start of Smarter Balanced. We went from a district where about 70% of our kids were proficient in mathematics to a measure of the core standards where about 30% of our kids were proficient. We started recognizing the signs right away. We tried to make little pieces down the way. For whatever reason, they haven't stuck. So having not only a plan of implementation in your hands this evening and looking at the sequence of courses will help remediate a lot of the things that you see right on that page. But we can't be satisfied with the decision tonight, too. And it's our commitment to you to make sure that the ad hoc committee that we have put together, with the names that you see up on the board, remains intact, that we have them as part of our sounding board, as our litmus test to making sure that what we are presenting and doing meets those expectations, and regular commitments back to you as a board of trustees and those who fill your seats in the future, to show you how our kids are progressing towards meeting those goals. These people have put together that program for you. The first thing that I wanted to talk about is Common Assessments. There is a thought that the only reason we are doing this is to improve our SAT scores. There is a thought that the only thing that we're doing this for is to improve our ISAT scores. No. The reason that we're doing this is to improve our focus, coherence, and rigor. But absolutely, it would be a joke for me to sit in front of you today and say that those aren't important. Those are an outward sign of the success of our district. Those are front-page news in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, of how we are achieving. So absolutely, those came into play, but we will be using a group of formative and interim assessments, provided my Smarter Balanced, checkpoint assessments along the way. We'll be measuring our students to a much greater extent than we are now. Much greater use of those interim assessment blocks and using open source and freely available resources, such as the ones that we've talked about, to make sure that we're watching our kids grow from place to place to place. Yes, the PSAT and the ISAT and the SAT are included in that, but really, that's what we all want. We want our district to be recognized for the work that our teachers and our students are doing. Again, these assessment results will be made public, quarterly, to you and to our community to make sure that everybody sees where we are growing as a district. In addition, the proposed plan helps us not only understand the scope and sequence, but it also helps put together the changes that we need in our culture. I think Katie talked about that. We've been doing the same things well for years. It's not working now. We need a plan that not only supports our teachers to fully understand the expectations that the core standards ask, but we need a course sequence that helps dovetail that as well. Bringing that together with professional development and collaboration makes sense. In addition, we have a new wrinkle that has been brought up. This is our core text for Algebra. Big Ideas Math has a part in this, and they recognize that we have not been able to achieve well with their system. They own that as well. And what they have offered to do is help support us better by buying back every one of these books at about 100 bucks a pop and replacing it with a text that better suits our course and sequence that's sitting in front of you tonight. May not be perfect, but they have offered to do that in the document in your packet tonight, which talks about how they would buy that back and how they also want to reset the professional development efforts for our teachers, so that we're using these materials effectively in instruction. So ultimately, if you act this evening, there is part of the motion that talks about what this would look like. Keep in mind, we talked to our content teachers, many of whom are in the room this evening, and we said, "What do you think about this?" We were really trying to be fiscally responsible in using the materials that we had and using them better. But this does suit us well, although I'm not really a huge fan of the cover. But at the same time, it is an offer, and it is something that you could consider tonight in your work. That swap would continue from Algebra I to Integrated I for this coming school year, if you follow the scope and sequence that we've identified, and then continue Geometry to Integrated II, Algebra II to Integrated III over the course of those three years. Again, free of charge to the district. The other thing that we wanted to remind you about is that we have been doing professional development this year. We knew that the scope and sequence wasn't going to change. You told us that you needed a little bit more time on that. So we started burgeoning things with a new professional growth plan. We've been bringing Minds on Math teachers in over the course of this year. And ultimately, we have a plan to actually start right away. If the board feels that the time is right to be able to support these changes, we have our initial plan set up for Thursday, to be able to hit the ground running, to be able to start with these expectations, to identify the teachers, and make sure that things are perfect by the time our kids show up this next year. You can see also, we're investing a lot of money and time to make sure that these teachers have the appropriate supports, not just one time a year, but that we constantly are looking at the results that are going on in our classrooms. At the bottom, you'll notice that these meetings of our Math I teachers for this coming year would be open. We would invite you to be a part of the process. We would invite our critics to be a part of the process. We would invite our public to be part of this process. This is a community need. And again, over the three-year plan, we would bring more and more of our teachers in, making sure that they fully understand the expectations of you, our trustees, and us, our administration, but also of their buildings as well. The last piece is around stakeholder communication. What are we going to do? Well, we've had parent meetings, we've sent out emails, we've used our fantastic social media to be able to tell people what we plan on doing, but at the same time, we have more that we need to do. If you feel that the time is right, we will hold parent meetings at the high school orientations coming up. We will have opportunities for people to find out, again, more about what Math I is. We'll send regular email communication. You may have noticed, we have a pretty extensive website already generated as to what this would look like. We want to reach out and make sure that people understand what is expected of them in this coming year. Finally, there has been some discussion that what we are doing is only going to benefit kids if they stay in the state of Idaho. I'd like to remind you, this is a slide that we showed earlier. Yes, we have talked in the state of Idaho. We have talked to our neighboring states of Washington and Montana. We've looked at the NCAA clearinghouse, but we have also contacted Stanford University, the Ivy League, the University of California system, and we've talked about, if we make this change, is that going to affect how kids get into your university? And the answer simply was, "No." And the answer simply was, no. The best concise answer that I can give to you is, we want your students to take the highest quality mathematics courses available to you. Keep in mind, if we spend an entire year having students take geometry, when geometry is now less than twenty percent of our overall standards that we're expected to teach in the high school level, we are diserving our kids. That's why this is here for you tonight. A course sequence better supports not only the needs and the wants, but it also gives kids the best pathway forward. As the department chair also from the University of Montana emailed me, "An integrated three-year approach better supports the vision laid out in the Common Core." The vision of the Common Core is one where all students are given broad exposure to mathematics, exposure that goes beyond the traditional areas of algebra and geometry. We're bringing in probability and statistics. We're bringing in mathematical modeling better than we can do now. Overall, this has been a long journey. There's been a lot of feedback back and forth. I did my very best for you to try to make this as concise as possible, taking off as much bias as I could foresee in these conversations. Here are really your ideas. Arguments for approving tonight. Greater focus, that focus coherence and rigor. An integrated pathway better connects concepts. Teachers recognize the need for improvement and are supportive of integrating math instruction as proposed. I'd like to remind to you, in your packet, there are lists of over forty current teachers in our district that have read both the implementation plan and the scope and sequence and support it. I don't know the last time that I could get forty teachers to do anything. That's impressive, and it tells you the commitment that your teaching staff has to make this right. Better preparing students for placement in college-level coursework. Folks, college-level coursework is not siloed. It's integrated. Grades K through eight are integrated. Only our high school is in the traditional pathway. But in all of this conversation, there are absolutely some arguments against. You can see it. The process for development has been unsatisfactory. We've gone too fast. The qualifications of who has been developing this has been questionable. The proposal is not research-based. That the current texts do not allow the scope and sequence to be followed. That we cannot guarantee that future boards or administration will fully support this effort. And we cannot guarantee that all colleges and universities will accept this integrated math coursework. Absolutely, there are some concerns there, but I can pretty much say, I think we've addressed all of them. So ultimately, I have a plane on the tarmac here in a few minutes. I want to, I know, it's pretty scary. It really, literally is. I want to thank you. I will stick around for a few, but we need to turn this over for you. I appreciate the opportunity to help put this committee together, to have these types of conversations, but I hope that the time presents itself well to you, that we have given you every option to be able to make a qualified decision.
Okay, Board, thank you, Dr. Nelson. I appreciate your efforts and your communication tonight. I'm sure, or I'm guessing everyone has a little something to say possibly about this. But if we have any questions for Dr. Nelson, I'd like to just get those addressed first, then we'll hear from Dr. Olson. But Dr. Nelson's doing some work for the State Department of Ed tomorrow and has a seven-something flight tonight in Spokane, so, and I guarantee he doesn't speed. So, we need to let him go here. So if we have any questions for Dr. Nelson, let's do that at this time, please.
So once again, Dr. Nelson, how did we go from seventy percent proficiency to thirty percent?
I'll be very honest with you. The old Idaho content standards were at a very low level. They were. So even when those standards came about, we started at around the fortieth percentile. And then literally, we drilled and drilled and drilled and drilled and drilled until we got to about the seventieth percentile. The old standards were finite. It specifically said, students should be able to do this. And so what did we do? We kept drilling it and drilling it until we have forty to fifty questions a night until we had kids that could do that. The new standards are much more broad. They're more conceptual, how kids are creating with mathematics. It's not just the product, it's how you get to the product. We've struggled with that at the high school level. Apparently, you know, we've done professional development, it's not sticking. So having something that is cohesive, that brings both sides of the equation together, but absolutely, I don't know that I can say that we did a great job working with the core standards at the high school level as we are now. Minds on Math has really helped out with that. It has broken down a lot of barriers. But again, if we still have the same silos, algebra, geometry, and Algebra II, what really does it do?
I'm not, I'm concerned about your flight, so I'm not going to ask you any more questions. I have some, I might have some comments later. I've been thinking about this a lot, as I know we all have been. But I don't want to.
I will stick around. I know that the plane's going to be waiting, but at the same time, this is important.
I don't want to, the question, I don't.
Okay.
Why don't you catch your plane? We'll get through this, okay?
Well, girl, Trina. I'm just kidding. We've got many to choose from out here. But I just want to thank you for all your time and your effort. And, you know, we've been asking you questions and you've been providing us information. And I was able to sit on the committee and it was, I thought it was exceptional, the list of people that were in there. My first meeting, I was like, wow, this is incredible that we have these amazing community members and teachers and stuff to all give input. So I was able to, I won't have as many questions as they all have, but thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And even though we have not been able to come to consensus as the committee, it was really inspiring to me. We had really deep conversation, and I think we hit as many gamuts as we possibly could have. And I thank you for taking your time to do so as well.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Travel safe. I'm sure someone will let you know what happens here tonight. Maybe we'll be done by the time you reach Boise. Yeah. Okay. So let's move into our thoughts on this, or if you have any other questions for anyone else? Okay?
You know, Trina, listening to the presentation and sitting down and talking to Ryan and being new in this position, I think what I found the most frustrating and really trying to listen to our community members that are concerned and that have students that haven't had great experiences, it seems to me like it could have been potentially the perfect storm. We switch over to the Idaho standards, but we all know they're the Common Core state standards. We don't really adapt what we're doing in the classroom, but we expect more from students. We see a trend in our scores from seventy, sixty, fifty, however, the plane circling down, but we do nothing. So we watched this happen over how many years? And we do away with formative assessments and of course assessments. So we don't have the data that we would normally have to say, wait a second, red flag, we need a life jacket over here. And so I think the frustration that I hear from community members is, well, it's great and all, our scores, we have a thirty percent proficiency, but why didn't we implement some of this amazing stuff in your implementation plan? Why were we not cross-collaborating? Why would we do away with formative assessments? You know, I think we have to acknowledge and recognize there is frustration on the community's behalf. We will be better in the future, but there were some things that maybe shouldn't have happened. I just wanted to hear your comment on that and maybe help me understand how we got to where we are.
Well, I can certainly understand the frustration. I think part of the problem is that we have been doing some things. We've been really working hard. Instead of doing some of the end-of-course assessments, we implemented interim assessments. So we didn't have to wait until the end of a semester to realize students were struggling in a concept, and we didn't have time to go back and remediate. So we started with the middle schools and did interim assessments where teachers were assessing students along the way, the teams were collaborating, and then adjusting instruction accordingly. And so we started a lot of that with the middle school, and we had some success. But when we started to try to implement those things at the high school, we were coming against roadblocks. And those roadblocks were that we were spending a lot of time teaching things that were, you know, that were important, but not as important as other things. As you notice, most of what students really need to know are those algebraic concepts. And so when we spend a lot of time teaching geometry, it's frustrating in some ways because you can have the best teaching practices, but if it's not what, you know, it's important for students to know, then that's where we run into trouble. And then, I wish Ryan was here, but he would explain, when he was visiting with a lot of teachers, we had many of our math teachers said, you know, I have all this, I have to make sure students master in Algebra I, and we don't have enough time to actually make sure that they really understand it and that we go deep. And then when we hit geometry, we don't even cover those things, and we take some topics that's good for students to know, and we spend a whole year teaching it. And then we come back to Algebra II, and, you know, we assume students remember everything from Algebra I. And so they were very frustrated because we were asking them to change their practices. We were asking them to assess students more, to make adjustments, to provide interventions. But they really didn't have the time to do it. And I, you know, probably some of the teachers could probably answer that question.
I think for me, it's more of a procedural, that, you know, we look at the continuous improvement plan in the fall, this first year, but yet we haven't come back to this continuous improvement plan. And so whether we're working together closer as a board and an admin team, we're workshopping, but it's not until we're getting the SATs or the S-Back scores and they're not great that we're communicating. And so I think going forward, it would be nice if we had a workshop quarterly about academic achievement. How are students doing? We're sitting around a table in an environment promoting academic achievement versus, I feel as a trustee, I'm on the defensive, trying to answer questions which I don't have answers for. And that is a frustrating position to be in. So I would like to know what you're doing. I don't want to manage what you're doing. I don't want to direct what you're doing, but I need to be more aware of what's happening so I can better explain to the community, that's what my role is, what's happening in our schools. And I'm hearing from them, that's why they're frustrated, and so.
And I would agree. I think we've been doing a lot of things behind the scenes, and we're usually talking about those end results, those summative assessments, SAT, and we're not necessarily sharing what we're doing along the way. I think you will find in the plan that we put together, that's why we have that math team, that's why we have those interim assessments, that's why we're going to report quarterly. Teachers will be collaborating together. Administrators will be collaborating, using the data. So I think some of the frustrations, and I definitely understand, you know, when we wait till the end and then you're not included along the way, it's hard for you to see what's going on. But I'm really confident that in the plan that we put together to implement the integrated, or even if we don't, if we move forward, we're going to use that plan. So we have interim assessments that we're meeting about it, we're collaborating about the data, we're using it to inform instruction, we keep the board in the loop, and then our eye, you know, our eye is constantly on that prize.
So my last question, really frustration, you know, as a trustee, is that I've heard repeatedly from parents, inconsistencies in grading at a high school level is stressful. And so we heard it again tonight. And so if we're going to move forward with a new curriculum or a new math program, I would like to see, and I would feel better, if parents can have the assurance that all students we measured the same way. We're no longer doing A, B, C, D, one through four. It has to be more consistent. And so I would request that maybe we talk about it, or you guys discuss it at an admin level and hear what the parents are saying, because I've heard it over and over again, that it's stressful for them.
And I would echo that we've been frustrated as a district. We, several years ago, we had a board workshop on grading for learning, and we tried to look at our assessment practices. And I think we've been very frustrated, too. I think I could speak for everyone. We would like to see the board's direction on where we want to go. And I know we have different board members that have different opinions, and so that's something that we really would like to delve into. And I think we need to include parents on that as well.
Consistency is just what I would like to see.
But I think the frustration's there, yeah.
I can give you some direction. If we want to improve academics in our district, I mean, come up with something like the committee came up with, and I agree with and I approve of the conclusions of the committee. Let me just say that right off the top of my head. But how can you expect to make great progress when kids are, the expectation, there doesn't seem to be a lot of rigor in our math classes and in other classes? When kids can take a test over as many times as they want until the end of the grading period, until they get the grade they want? This is called, I think it's called mastery-based learning, but I think it may just be an interpretation of mastery-based learning. When kids can turn in assignments whenever they feel like it, as long as they turn in something by the end of the grading period, maybe. Because from what I've been told, kids in our secondary math classes, at least the ones I've been told about, if they turn in nothing, they still get fifty percent. I mean, what kind of grading model is this? Is this true? This is nuts if it is.
Board members, we're not known to talk about grading policies, so.
Well, it's part of this. It's part of this.
Right, but we're talking big-picture grading practices. And I think what Dr. Cottle said is true. You know, Superintendent Handelman, that was, I think, a priority of his was the growth mindset and that grading model that went along with it. And with his departure, that's kind of been floating out there, and I've heard that from staff members and ad members. We're not going to tackle that here tonight. So I guess, I hear what you're saying.
One last comment. I keep getting emailed letters from lots and lots of parents about, my kid's been getting straight A's in math, and then they take a standardized test and they get twenty, thirty percent. Can it be that they've been babied along in their work ethic, in their, you know, actually getting the work done? I don't see the rigor in the way mastery-based learning is being applied in our district at the secondary level.
And I would just say that I think it is a topic we need to talk about because I think it's really difficult and not fair to pinpoint and say it's mastery learning or it's students' reassessing. It's really a deeper conversation because when, we have several teachers that are having students reassess, but it's what happens between those assessments that makes the difference. So I think it's really definitely a conversation we need to have because there's a lot of miscommunication out there. Not everyone has the same definition, and I think we're all on the same page. We want more rigor for our students. We want our students to be successful, and not just successful on tests, but successful when they go to take those math concepts and apply them.
Getting back to trustee May's comment, we need some consistency. We need consistency in grading practices across the district.
Can we request a workshop right now on grading policies in the summer, maybe, when we have a little extra time? Just so we're on record saying it's an issue, we'll tackle that.
I certainly think that's something we need to have Dr. Cook involved with. Yeah.
Yeah, I would echo consistency because what you're saying, you're hearing, I have middle schoolers, and that's not the case there. So it's just different across the board. Mine don't get to retake and retake and retake. Each teacher seems to have taken their own way of whatever was developed in implementing it. So the, I would just echo.
It's going on. We do need to get some consistency here, yeah.
In relation to math issue, I just wanted to make a few comments. First of all, I've struggled with this issue the same way I struggled with math in high school. I did very, I struggled with it. I made it to college, did well in college, but if I could avoid a math course, I would. So, and so I've struggled with this issue. Part of the reason I've struggled with this issue is because I don't want to get down in the weeds on this issue. I don't really feel like it's my job to figure out, as a trustee, all the, you know, is this sequence better than this sequence or all that? That's, to me, is just not something, one, I can think I can do, and two, I want to do. I do appreciate Dr. Nelson's arguments for approving it and for not approving it. Kind of an executive summary is what I heard. And that's the kind of stuff I like to see going forward. I like those kind of summaries. Give us the, lay it out here, give us the truth, give us the good and the bad and the ugly, let us make the decision. Sometimes I've felt, and I've said this before, I felt like sometimes we're kind of, there's kind of a sales job going on. Now, getting back, and I'm not saying so much on this, but I've felt that at times, at certain times, the information is presented in a way that they want, that people want us to vote. But to me, when I think about this situation, I stand back and look at it, you know, obviously the status quo is not acceptable. It is not acceptable. It's terrible. And that's why I asked that question, how we got from seventy percent to thirty percent? Whatever's happened, whether it's the Idaho core, whatever it is, so we have to make a change. And, you know, some of the people who've opposed this have said that we need to wait until the new superintendent arrives. That was one of the statements on one of the letters we received. Well, the new superintendent, I think, is on record supporting the change. So I'm not sure that's really a good argument. The issue I brought up with Dr. Nelson just in fact today was the issue of colleges outside of Idaho that are, that would be affected. that are, that would be affected, in other words, students graduating, would they be able to get into those colleges? Because this was developed, he said, with U of I and N I C people, which is included in that thing he put up there. So, and he said, as he presented quickly, that there are other colleges, you know, that other states, that these standards would, the concern is, would somebody graduate from one of our schools, would they still be able to get into a college? Or if we go to integrated math, is that somehow going to mess up their ability to get into a college? So I, you know, I keep asking myself, if it's not this, if not this plan, then what plan? You know, what's your alternative? I haven't seen any other alternative presented. I've heard a lot of griping about the fact that people didn't like, maybe some of the people on the committee, they didn't like the way the assessment standards, they didn't like maybe this, you know, various issues. But I haven't seen another, any alternative other than just don't do it, stop. And I don't think, frankly, the status quo, I don't think we can afford to stop. Now, there's a certain amount of trust as a trustee, I have a certain amount of trust. And the trust is in our, that our administration, the people who are, like Dr. Nelson and yourself, are knowing, you know, are doing their best job and are knowing what you're doing, or knowing what you're doing, and are giving us your best recommendation. So I have to trust that, and I do trust that. And I respect the professionalism of the people involved in this. So I frankly think that we don't have much, I think that this is a good plan we've put forward. And I like the fact that, as trustee May talked about, there just be, we want regular updates, we want to be included. So, you know, we need to stay on top of this issue. That's our, if we don't have any other job, you know, in addition to physical safety of the kids in schools, their academic achievement is our number one priority. That's why we're being, that's why it's supposed to be at the top of the list. And we can't do that unless we know regularly what's going on and be able to ask questions. And not just all of a sudden, oh my gosh, you know, all this information all at once, we've got to make a decision. I mean, I like ongoing feedback. So, anyway, I guess, Dr. Cottle, I don't have a question of yours, I was more making kind of my own, you know, I've struggled with this thing, and finally come to the conclusion that we need to move forward on this, and hopefully it's the best way to go. That's all I can say.
And I just wanted to add real quick, although I don't have a student that attends CHS, I do have a student that will be graduating from Lake City High School this June, and another one entering, and another one to follow. But anyways, I would have loved for my oldest to have had integrated math. She had Algebra I in seventh grade, probably not, probably a little young for Algebra I. Geometry in eighth grade. And she's a hard-working student. She's a salutatorian this year because she works really hard. But the, but how, the age of, I would say, when she learned it and that time space to when you do do all the testing, it's like, whoa, I haven't done that in three years. So I would have loved for integrated math to be around when Taylor was coming up in middle school. It would have been so beneficial for her to see these concepts, you know, year after year after year, not just one year here a little bit, as much as teachers can, I mean, they have to cover so much in a little timeframe. So anyways, just speaking from, even though I don't have one at CHS, I do have one. And it should be the same across the board regardless of what high school our kids go to. And the fact that I see that it's supported by our professionals across the board in itself speaks volumes to myself. And they're saying, "We are ready for this, and please let us do this." So, again, I'm just grateful for the hard work. I know that you wanted to do this last year, and you guys had been thinking about it, and we hadn't heard of it, so we were like, whoa, slow down this process, we need to do this. And I appreciate you guys listening to that and doing the ad hoc committee and getting input from lots of different people, so thank you for that.
Okay, I'm going to just give a couple of comments. And I need to try to be out of here at 6:30, which looks like a big stretch right now, but... So I'm going to keep my comments brief. One thing, I'd just like to thank the community members here, the committee members who are here, and those who aren't, who participated. You know, this has been 14 months or so that we've been talking about this. And I think in this time, we've approved social studies, I think, for the entire district. We've done health, we've done P.E. standards, music standards, you name it. Almost every other curriculum in our district, we have approved in this time, with the exception of a few that were done just prior, science and ELA. Or maybe we even did ELA. It's coming, thank you. So, I have no doubt that, you know, people's heart and soul has been poured into this recommendation, to this implementation plan. And I would venture to guess that more hours have been put into this plan than anything in the history of this district. Is it perfect? Probably not. But I think if we wait for the perfect plan, we're going to wait forever. You know, the common concerns I hear, I think, are the text, just a concern with Big Ideas textbook. I personally would like to see this committee, or those who are willing, stick around next year and that we continue our ad hoc committee, that we ask that they quarterly review the testing points and present to the board at a board meeting, but also that they look at the textbook. I understand we're going to switch it out, but is that the right thing to do? If it's, and I've heard this secondhand, I guess. I've never heard it directly from any of you, or from Dr. Nelson or Dr. Cottle, but that Big Ideas is a watered-down textbook that our students can handle, and that these other textbooks, they just can't. That bothers me. I've never heard that from any of you, but I've heard that secondhand. And I have a big problem with that, if we're choosing this textbook or to stay with this textbook because of that. So I would like us to continue to review the textbook. I absolutely support implementation of the integrated math. I think for the most part, you could have the best curriculum in the world and do a lousy job with it, and you could have the worst curriculum in the world and do a great job with it. It all depends on what we're doing in the classroom. So it's not a huge hang-up for me, but it is one. So, you know, those are my thoughts. I appreciate the work that's continued to go into it, that we've tried to make tweaks to get people on board and really to improve the plan. And what was presented this year is far better than what was presented last year. It's far more comprehensive than what was presented last year. And now the tough work begins. Now it needs to be taken out and implemented and to work, so those are my thoughts.
And I would echo that you're right. We're probably not going to find something perfect from the get-go. And I don't know about you all, but I don't really want, I would love perfect, but I just think as, when we want continuous improvement, that I look at this as this is going to be continuous improvement. We should always be looking at what we're teaching our kids. Is this working? Are they actually getting these concepts? What can we do better? And I do believe that that's taken place more so now than ever has been in the past. And I think teachers working together has been taking place more now than has been in the past. And it's a beautiful thing. So I look at this as something that we're going to constantly look at. Say it rolls out this next year, we're going to be looking, all hands on deck, looking at this. How did this work? Talking with one another, what should we do to improve this? And so on, from here on out. And that just should be what we strive to do always, as we, you know, have high expectations and want the best for our kids and our professionals teaching, so.
I just wanted to thank the ad hoc committee and the administration and district teachers and staff for putting this together and the hard work and answering all of our questions. There's been lots, so thank you.
And I want to say a big thank you to you as well. I think the idea of integrated math is perfect. It's long overdue, and it is going to make a big impact on our district and our academic achievement. But we do need to take care of the grading model, okay?
Okay, so if we're ready for a motion, the motion would be to approve the recommendation of the ad hoc committee, content committee, for the proposed high school math course, course, pathway, implementation plan, course sequence, and textbook as presented for the 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries, Ms. Town. Okay, I want to just clear up something on our last item here, which is our elementary site update. This is an update, I heard some reference, and I can't remember if it was Steve or Amy or someone else, but there is no action tonight in regard to this. We're just kind of updating where we're at in it. And in the interest of time, I'm just going to summarize kind of quickly, and then we'll have some discussion. We'll hear from Mr. Martin. And Mr. Shipley has a presentation for us as well. As the board's aware, and the public may not be aware, but over the last two months, and it was about two months ago that the board decided to move forward with the Hayden Lake site, based on timing, and I think trustee Hearn said this at the time, and I think some of us shook our heads in agreement that, you know, we made two promises. And one was to open it in the west or northwest corridor, and one was to open it in fall of 2019. And it was based on where we were at with property in that area and the lack thereof, we moved ahead with the Hayden Lake site and have been doing some due diligence over the last two months to try to meet one of those targets. Earlier this week, I think you all saw an email, and the realisticness of meeting the target of September 2019 is all but off the table. And, you know, the good news is, we've done a couple of things. One, we've done a bunch of due diligence with the city of Hayden. I think we have a pretty good picture of what development of the Hayden site will look like. Two, we've continued to pursue a property in the northwest section or on Prairie Avenue and put that property under contract. We've been working through some due diligence on that as far as appraisals and Phase One environmental studies, both of which we're hoping to get sometime this week, it sounds like. So that's where we're at. Mr. Shipley has kind of a presentation here, some numbers that were in our board packet, just looking at the property Prairie and the Hayden Lake site from an economic cost standpoint and from a cash flow standpoint. Like I said, we're not noticed for any action here tonight. What I would recommend, if the board's supportive after we hear from Mr. Shipley, is we're not in a hurry now. If we're not going to make September of 2019, which by all accounts, we are not going to, we have a little time here to make sure we're making the best decision for our district and the best decision for our students. So what I would suggest is that we take 30 days. We have some questions on the Coeur d'Alene site, the Prairie Avenue site, that need to be answered by the city of Coeur d'Alene. So my suggestion would be that we take 30 days, and we just kind of pause on our 30 days while we answer those questions.
Can I ask one question? I appreciate your comments. Okay, I've heard we cannot open in the fall of 2019, but I haven't heard why. I wrote an email to Scott Fisher, asking him why, and he, I didn't hear back from him. So I, maybe, hopefully we can answer that question. Is that solid, it cannot happen then, or is that? You know, I just wanted a why.
All, Brian's getting them, you got it? Do you want to go to the podium?
Well, there's multiple things that are causing us for the delay. Start with is that our architects are at a standstill. They can't do anything more than what they're doing right now because they don't have a clear direction of where to go on the Hayden site because of the negotiations that we're in with the city of Hayden. So they're just, they're not doing anything on it. So because of that, we're not going to be ready to go out to bid here in the fall. It's not going to happen anymore. They just don't have enough time to put in good, solid plans and specs out there to do the job. So because of that, if we can't get it out early this fall, like late July or into August, where they can, a crew can, or a general contractor could come in and start construction and hopefully get going on this thing to a point where they can work all winter long, the project is not going to go. So that time has lapsed, and I talk to Scott a lot. We talk just about every day. And it's, we've missed that opportunity.
Well, if you don't mind, too, the way I've kind of looked at it is, they've got to finish the plans. We've got to put them out for bid, you know, and that's, there's a gap there. Then you have to put them out for permit. And like Coeur d'Alene High School, which we approved three months ago, still doesn't have their building permits, or unless they just got it here in the last few days. So, you know, and city of Hayden's telling us, hey, we'll work with you the best you can. And city of Coeur d'Alene's doing the same, but, you know, they're feeling the building boom too. So they're just, you know, these are complicated buildings, and it's slowing them down a little bit. So if we can't hit that September target, and they can't get the building up, you know, and get it enclosed for winter, that's what's going to throw us off. Right. I mean, it was a tight window to begin with.
Yeah, we knew it was going to be tight, but...
We ran out of time to have it open by then. Can we have it open January possibly, or not?
Well, that was brought up too, but it's a difficult thing too, because now you go into that summer, you're trying to do all your landscaping and all that stuff in the summertime. Well, you're still building your building at the same time. They're going to still be in the old building, so we can't take that building down. So it actually, the north building wouldn't be able to be demoed until after they moved in. So that piece wouldn't be done until the following summer. And depending on what concept that was, it might affect also bus turning lanes and stuff like that. So it's, it'd be tough. It'd be really tough to do it in January. I mean, we could move the building, but the site part wouldn't be completed.
Chris, you want to walk us through this sheet that you put together?
Yeah, I can walk us through this sheet. It's actually an integrated sheet, so we have math and economics and a little bit of decision analysis here also. So what I want to do is help, this spreadsheet, the purpose of this is to help just guide our thinking and your decision-making. And I want to just point out cost, price, and cash flow. Cost is what you're giving up, whether you're giving up cash or the right to sell. Price is going to be your dollars per, in case, here it'd be dollar per land or item here. And in cash flow is going to be the size of your outflow. We don't have any inflow on this. So what I've done here is I've compared Prairie to the Hayden site, and there are two columns to that Hayden site, and that's just for land. If you look down below, there, I got a little footnote there. And there was an assessment done, an appraisal done, three years ago. And he broke out the land, and the most recent appraisal that we had at the Hayden site was also a breakout just for land. And then so if we took just those absolute costs, it's a million eight, three years ago. Or if you use it today, it's a little over $2 million. So that's where I, this is just an estimate up here. These aren't absolute numbers. I don't have perfect information, but I got good information here. And then so if you go... And then, so if you go down this list here, that's where we get into our economic cost. So Prairie, what would be the cost there? That's actual cash outflow of the district to purchase the Prairie site. The Hayden site there, what's our cost? Our cost is what we would give up. We would give up the right to sell that land, if you chose to do that. So, that's where we get those two cost columns. The tally down below is our economic cost, and then what we have then even further down is we have an adjustment to cash. So, on the Prairie side, we get a little bit of help with the sewer cost, and then on the Hayden site, the city of Hayden is gonna be working with us, and then so you sum up those items there, they're either gonna help pay for those items, or they're gonna waive that cost to the school district. And then below, what I have here is then the adjustment back to get to cash, 'cause we didn't actually have to outlay that cash up above, and so we adjust that down below. So, that's how we actually get that adjusted to cash below. So, just another way to help us talk about cost, 'cause I think when we have our discussions back and forth, a lot of times we talk about cost, and then we also talk about cash flow as being equitable and being the same thing. So, this is just here to help structure those two terms. Going down here, entitlements, it's not gonna be perfect, so we have some planning and zoning. That Prairie side with the Coeur d'Alene, there's information, it's not complete, that we still do need to get from the city of Coeur d'Alene. But it's something to consider. It's an area that we could build on, and then that would leave open that Hayden site to either continue to occupy, or maybe we do sell that. On the Prairie side, we could even, possibility out there, you could purchase it, hold on to it, still hold on to the Hayden site and build there. So, there's options here. This doesn't point you to one direction, this just helps you see options that the board has. Does that make sense, or...
Chris, I had a couple of questions on your spreadsheet. So, one, your sewer cap fees look high for the Coeur d'Alene site. Do you know...
So, the Coeur d'Alene site, that is from their city engineer, and it's 227 per student, plus the staff.
And what were you calculating staff at?
So, 550 students, that'd be 124. And then I estimated how much staff would be on there, and then so I added a fifth of that cost, which is another 25, so 124, 850, I rounded that up to 125 plus 25, that's how I got to the 150.
Okay. And then, I think it's a little bit confusing how you have the $90,000 that you take off. So, really, the economic cost is less, because Mr. Butler's, you know, in our agreement, is paying, so the actual cost for the sewer is really, extension is 60, it's not... So, I think it's a little bit, it's a little confusing, so really, it should be, the economic cost should really be about 1.4.
Well, that's where you get down then to the actual adjusted cash, so, 'cause we don't know if that's actually gonna happen, or what other help we would get, or possibly get from the city. So, I kinda wanted to help just compare the two sites together.
Well, that's actually in the, but I think that's probably part of the agreement. We're not gonna move forward unless we get that piece hammered out, I would imagine.
That's true. That's true.
Yeah, I think I saw communication that they've actually put that money into escrow already, 'cause of their agreement with Butler, or with the Greenstone, but I...
Correct, so that part has been done, yeah. And as I understand, also, the water has been brought to that site, too. So, water hookup.
Chris, could you go to the other page of your...
I can, the other tab?
Yeah, the other tab, there, thank you. This is, this just updates some of the things that have happened with the city in the last week or so. So, you can see there's a column of cost there, it's about $600, $6,000 of various things that are gonna need to be done. The biggest one's some off-site sewer work. And in the initial discussions, and by initial, I'd probably mean the first month after the board made the decision they made, city administration was kinda pointing to all those costs, and pointing to the district as the responsible party. And I'd just like to thank the Brett Bauer and Mayor Griffiths, you know, have kinda worked through this thing, and, you know, really backed, okay, whose expenses are these, and whose aren't they? And so they've been able to adjust some things there, and, you know, eliminate what we engineered, or what our people estimated at about $550,000 in costs, and that's off-site sewer, it's the sewer cap fee. The way they were able to get rid of the sewer cap fee was the, their lot that they own used to be a mobile home park, so it has a whole bunch of sewer hookups that have been paid on that. So, they're transferring those to the district in the land exchange, so it eliminated that sewer cap fee. You know, the off-site sewer really wasn't, you know, the district was gonna put some strain on their sewer system, but it, you know, really wasn't our responsibility, it's a city sewer system, so they're using their sewer funds to do a number of improvements to their system, so. The good news is, you know, I think in the last week or two, those $550,000 worth of fees and improvements have gone away, which maybe two weeks ago, we thought those were gonna be there, and that really changed the picture big. If you had, if you would add that $550,000 onto Chris's other page there, it really puts a big discrepancy between the projects.
I think that's pretty impressive, but I think, Dr. Olson, you had some negotiations on this, didn't you?
We had some very good conversations with their administration, and again, they expressed their willingness to cooperate with taking action on shifting costs, re-establishing costs, and taking responsibility for costs. Oh, sorry. Yes, a goodly amount of work has been done to, again, move this discussion forward. The reminder that we keep making in these discussions is that, given the information we have right now, and that we're gonna need not one, not two, but multiple school properties available for the next school, and the schools that will follow thereafter in pretty short order. So, we're kinda looking at not only the NEXA site as a practical and appropriate situation, but the Prairie site, and then other sites that now come into play with our boundary discussions with Post Falls. So, we'll need all of them, folks, and what we're trying to do is work the numbers so that we can get on these sites as quickly, and as efficiently, fiscally responsible, if you will, as possible to make these things happen.
So, is there some realistic expectation that we will be creating a land bank?
That's been the board's intention from the beginning, from our discussions that started last July, and we've made tremendous progress on that. Now we've gotta close the loop on the third element of that...
And thank you for all of your efforts, Dr. Olson.
Well, everybody aboard here has done really, really good work.
So, again, we're not, no action tonight, but just, one is an update for us and for the community, and two is, are we okay with taking, you know, another thirty days here, which are gonna allow us to fill in some more dots here, and get some better information?
Casey, can I just give an update? I had the opportunity to meet with the city of Coeur d'Alene, just kinda reaching out, seeing...
Yes.
So, I wanted to give you an update.
Yeah, Monday morning.
Yeah, so it was Sean Holm and Hillary Anderson, and we had a, and Steve Casey was there. We had a great meeting, just kind of getting ready for next year, as long-range planning starts a process of making their next recommendation. And we really met because Planning/Zoning met last Tuesday, and at their meeting, they had five families come, because they were hearing the proposal for the new Greenstone development. These families were very frustrated and concerned, they lived in the northwest region of our community, and there wasn't room for their students currently, and if the Planning/Zoning was to approve this development, then where would these students from these 465, or whatever the number of 67 homes, where are they gonna go to school if we're already overcrowded in this area? They were directed to come, to talk to us, because Planning/Zoning doesn't make the recommendation based on availability of schools, or seats in classrooms. But there was some concern from these families about growth, and what was promised in the bond campaign, and they were concerned that we were building in the north end, and not in the northwest area. So, it kinda started the conversation, so we sat down, and she shared with me, and I have a map I can share, kinda an overhead view of where this new development is gonna go. And it's probably about 400 yards from the Prairie Ramsay site. And just what the implications would be, what the build-out timeframe is, and she thought six years for full build-out, depending on economic conditions. And then we also talked a little bit about Arc Terra and their developments in that area, but I think the takeaway from, the most important piece was, is that we need closer communication with the city of Hayden, and the city of Coeur d'Alene, and that we should be partners at the table, and land banking is something in planning, something that we should be doing. So, we kinda talked a little bit about, even the notices that they sent to us, long-range planning wasn't aware of them. You know, they go to the superintendent, and they go to the chair of the board, but we all need to be on the loop on where development's happening, and thinking ahead, and having that be a part of our deciding factor, where we build schools. So, we just kinda were brainstorming, and, you know, meeting quarterly, getting representatives from the school board, the district, and the city, and sitting down at the table and being partners, and saying, how do we solve this problem of overcrowding? We're gonna have to build new schools, let's look to the future as far as land acquisition. And they had some ideas that we can talk about in a workshop, as far as compelling developers, whether it's through, you know, getting approval, you know, what we could do, there's not much, but there are some things that we could start conversations for, so.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, Lisa raises an exceptional point here, and one that I hope that is remembered as we advance to the end of this year, and the beginning of next year, and that is, right hand and left hand are in concert. We've had a great deal of independent actions, we've had a great deal of several entities going in one direction, and other entities going in another direction, and a lot of surprises along the way. We're in a very, very good position right now, with the new superintendent coming, with planning in front of us, to sit down with all of the parties that are going to be players in this process, and do a coordinated agenda for the coming year, so that the board, again, is comfortable with and understands the direction of long-range planning, the work of the administration, the relationship with the city of Hayden, with the city of Coeur d'Alene, and so on and so forth. Lisa's absolutely correct, all of that stuff comes into play. We really need to get on top of that, and develop a coordinated plan as a district moving forward, so everyone knows the who, what, when, where, why, how much, who, what, when, where, why, how, how much of the process, and what our roles and responsibilities are in that. And there's not any surprises, there's not any... And again, do I think blindsiding has been intentional here? No. I think everybody has done work with the best of intentions and the best of focus, but we've got to do a much, much better job in coordinating this process, and particularly our work for the coming year in this domain. It's extraordinarily important that we do that.
Thank you, Dr. Olson. Okay, I have to pick up a kiddo, so I'm gonna have to head out of here, so I can pass my gavel to Trustee Hearn.
Well, I can ask you quick, 30 seconds. From a financial perspective, if I'm understanding the spreadsheet correctly, what does the economic cost actually mean? So, we look at 1.5 versus 2.6 versus 2.1, is that what it's actually, the value that it's costing the district?
Well, the real cost here is if you stay on the Hayden site, if you're giving up that choice to sell it. So, that's how we wanna, you know, equate these two here. You don't have to, but that's where we get down to that economic cost.
If we're stewards of taxpayer dollars, and you're advising us financially, what are you advising us towards?
If it was, if it was me, and I just had the scepter?
If you're my, no, if you're my advisor, my financial advisor...
Your financial advisor, I would go with Prairie.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, and with that, if there's nothing further, meeting adjourned.